Professors and...
All right, so, said we have a really full day. I want to welcome everyone before I go to our CIO. I want to say one thing. We've got students here, and one of the most important lessons they're learning right now about government is you have to be flexible. And today is going a totally different tact than I thought it was going to. So with that, CIO Hayes, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, good morning Chair Bass. We have two modifications. Item D11 and item I3 will be pulled from the calendar and returned at a future date.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item D11?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. If you are listening to this at home and you want to make comment on any of these items, you need to press star nine to raise your hand to know that we know you're there, and also turn your video off on, I mean, the volume off on your video feed because there will be a significant time delay once you call in and while you're listening on the phone. So with that, is there anyone in the audience here who wanted to comment on any of the consent calendar items? I don't see any. Do we have anyone?
Madam Chair, we have no hands up online.
Okay, so then we will go back to the board. We have a motion in a second. Is there any conversation? Apparently not. Are we ready to vote?
I'm going to have to do a roll call vote until we get that...
We're having technical difficulties, but...
Okay, Supervisor Madrone.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Supervisor Bass.
Yes.
Supervisor Bone.
Yes.
And Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
All right, and for those of you who may be here to make general public comment on items that are not on the agenda, which would normally be right after consent calendar, we do have a 9:05 time set for the students, and we expect, we probably will not get to that public comment on non-agenda items, at least till 9:30, and it might be later this morning after we get through with a couple other items. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Supervisor Bone to introduce the class.
Well, I'd like to, hi Jim, I'd like to welcome the kids from, young adults, kids, from the Academy of the Redwoods out there at College of the, College of the Redwoods. Had the distinct pleasure of meeting with them, was that last week? Time flies when you're old. And I've been going to a class for quite a few years, and I think that was probably the best range of questions, and I think I was there an hour and a half, and I was absolutely amazed when the time ran out because I figured we could have spent more time. They had some, I felt very comfortable after I left there because these are some pretty wise kids that are asking some great questions about taking us into the future. So I was personally excited about that. I think everybody else will be too. So with that, we all get this opportunity to bring someone, bring people in, and I'd like, I think, I think I called these guys the smart kids, which is really good, and some of them kind of got embarrassed, and like I said, don't be embarrassed for being smart because us dumb kids need you guys, so keep it going.
And also, we'll all try to be fairly brief up here so that we can have maximum time with your team, so, welcome.
Well, good morning, everybody. Jim Ritter here with the Humboldt County Office of Education, and I have the privilege to work with Mr. Freeman, Andrew Freeman, who's the government teacher at Academy of the Redwoods for this field trip today. As you know, supervisors who've been hosted at other schools before, we try and have the students to share about their schools and issues of concern. So we have two students this, or four students this morning who are going to come to the podium. They wanted to speak from the podium and present to you, so I will just invite our first student up to introduce themselves and share what they have to say.
All right, thank you.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Randy Mavidi. I am, my name is Randy Mavidi. I'm a senior at Academy of the Redwoods. In the future, I'm interested in studying history and eventually getting a master's in library sciences to help me become a librarian. I, one thing I really like about AR is that it...
I'm Mia Wagar. I'm a second year...
It can tell that you need a break. It has the support system to pick you back up and make sure that you're able to keep pushing yourself in the future. And one thing that I find super interesting about it is the fact that we have free range to any college classes. We can take any classes, and we actually use that to fill our electives. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Matthew Coyle. I'm a junior at AR. AR is nice, has nice people. Let's see. In the future, I want to do something related to computer science. I like programming and taking a programming class at the moment. It's fun. Get to manipulate what the computer does. Yeah, AR is a nice place to be.
Thank you. Was your name Matt, your first name?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Welcome, and who's next? Because we want to make maximum use of your time that you guys are here. Welcome.
Hi, and good morning. My name is Brenda Pimenta Mendez.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you?
Okay. I'm a third year at Academy of the Redwoods, and something that I enjoy about this community is that the professors are really engaging with the students, and something that I want to pursue after graduation is become a doctor, or something that has to do with anatomy.
Good.
All right, thank you Brenda.
Hello, my name is Jacob Rose. I am a third year at AR. I plan on majoring in psychology, so that way I can become a therapist. One of the, one of my favorite things about AR is the, the teachers specifically. I think that they, they are like iconic to the school, and I believe that like the community that is built around the teachers is super unique, especially compared to other schools locally. And something that's like super unique about AR is I think you always have someone to fall back on and someone to rely on, like, no matter, no matter what's happening, someone, someone's there to help you with whatever you're struggling with, which is something that's not usually available at most schools, which is awesome. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you Jacob.
Between all four of you, between a librarian, a doctor, an anatomy, IT, and a psychologist, when you leave, the human resources is right out there. Start your applications early because we have openings for every one of those right now, so.
Any other students going to present? Okay, I also wanted to introduce you to Arnie King, the Academy of the Redwoods principal over there who's here. And I did want to mention before, I know the board will introduce yourselves to the students, that when Supervisor Bone came to our class, he charged the students with presenting questions to you, questions of concern, and I did see the letter that the students sent with their six questions, which were very thoughtful and interesting. So we appreciate already you working on the responses to that, and I know we won't be able to hear those responses all today, and you're going to get staff involved too, but thank you for engaging the students and responding to their questions.
And I did want to give a shout out to Health and Human Services Director Connie Beck because she took on those questions last night, and I think she, I don't know if she's here or not, but yeah, she provided a lot of the information, and we have more resources that we can certainly offer the students, and we'll get those other questions as well. When we even introduce ourselves, I have been reminded by another supervisor that we should keep at our three-minute time limit ourselves, probably since we only have 15 minutes, and I think we'll all probably also cover what is important in our district as well and throw that one in there. Supervisor Bone?
And I, and I mentioned Connie Beck, our Director of Health and Human Services. She's back there with her dream team, and with all your great questions and everything else, I thought it would be worth their while before the end of the year if she could actually take a step out there to give you the answers, because you guys asked the most pressing questions that are facing your future and are present, and, and for a lot of you, the present day. So I think her insight and, you know, she could pry away her dream team with her to answer some of those questions, because I know she had to light up because a couple of those positions you were talking about, she needs those positions filled, so she could probably talk about some of the positions that are available and what's available to you in the college, so. And I think people, and just the last thing I want to ask, when you guys graduate from AR, which is a fast-track high school program, you guys also have almost all your requirements to graduate from junior college if you want to, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, people have to accept that you guys are, I mean, you're way up the ladder, and I think it's, it's so impressive that you guys have jumped out and done that. But anyway, thank you.
So Supervisor Bone, this is the time we talk about our districts. I think we'll just let you continue and tell them of at least where your district is and anything else specific you wanted to add.
Well, like, I explained to you where my district ran, and actually College of the Redwoods is, is right in the middle of it, and I'm actually, next year will be a, I think it'd be my, no, two more years, be 50 years since I graduated from College of the Redwoods. So, dropped out of high school, graduated from college. But the thing is, it's, it's, I have used, and like I told you guys, my high school relationships and my junior college relationships and things like that, those are relationships today that I use, and in this job and every job I've ever had, so keep those bonds, because those people down the line, 25 years from now, you're going to run into and go, hey, didn't we? And you'll have a bond, both in the business world and your personal world. So I think your friendships and what you, it's not what you learn in the book, it's what you learn outside the book that carries as much weight as what you learn in the book, and if you add the two together, you can go far. So, like I said, I'm one of five. I go from a little bit of Eureka, a little tiny bit of Fortuna, out to Honeydew, Petroya, Ferndale, Shidley, Redcrest, Holmes, I can go on, and so Stafford, Scotia, so I get a lot of Little Bergs with a lot of great people, probably have 95% of the dairies in my district, so, got milk. So that's, that's, that's a big part of the agriculture and the resource base that I have, so I just think it's great you guys are here and what you guys have stepped up, because getting those college credits where you're doing high school credits takes a lot of time also and a lot of dedication. That's what impresses me so much. Like I said, I've known some kids that have graduated out of there, and just had one graduate at 20 years old from UCLA this last year, so, pretty impressive.
It's, I'm going to start with Supervisor Bushnell to explain about her district.
Good morning. I'm in the second district of Humboldt, which is from Fortuna to the Mendocino County line, out to Shelter Cove, and then to the Trinity County line out Densmore, so it'd be Garberville area and so forth. So I want to commend you guys for the AR program and your parents without having busing options besides our local transit bus, transit buses. I know that there are kids coming from Southern Humboldt that go to the AR program, and their parents are responsible to get them there, and it's commitment for the kids also, a lot earlier, a lot later days, and I've had a couple, my goddaughters are in the AR program, and they just love it, and so I commend you guys. The issue, I read your list of issues, issues in Southern Humboldt. I have a unique, well, we all do, I guess, I have two incorporated areas, and the rest of my district is unincorporated, which the county monitors the unincorporated and the cities monitor the incorporated, but we also have homeless, houseless issues, and issues that cannabis is an issue in Southern Humboldt. I have about three-quarters of the cultivators in that district because of the sun, so that's something that I deal with a lot, and then also county roads are an issue, you know, trying to get enough funding to get the roads up, up to snuff. It's a very rural area, so I'm glad to see you guys here this morning, and congratulations on the AR program.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you. It was great to have you guys here. I certainly have good friends of mine that have been through your program, been through that program, and also kids and friends of mine, so just appreciative of the, the choice that we have in this community to have this, this college-adjacent high school program. Really, I think it speaks to you all as young adults, and it's, it's really great. My district is District Three, or the district that I represent. It's not mine, it belongs to the people who live in it, and it is Arcata, Blue Lake, Manila, basically the north end of the bay, but it does have quite a bit of land that stretches out all the way down to, close to Fortuna and, and east to Maple Creek. So within there, there's Cal Poly Humboldt, which is, which is a big driver in that space. There's the aquaculture in the north end of the bay, all the oysters, about 80% of California's oysters are grown in, in the north end of Humboldt Bay. And it's a, you know, it's a, it's a community that's, that's tight-knit like the rest of them. My job in general is, I guess, as a district supervisor, we're kind of like, as a county, we're a little bit like cities, except that we are, represent the state as one of 58 counties in terms of delivering services through the state and then governing land use across the county, which in this case, the county of Humboldt, two and a half million acres, I believe, something like that, it's almost the size of Connecticut, with a population of about 140,000 people. So it's a little different than a lot, lot of other places, and there's a lot to manage within that space. The job that I have is kind of in three parts, and the job that we have in general is, one is sort of running this institution, which is the county of Humboldt County, and all its services that it provides, both roads and health and land use and all of these other things that are happening, and governing that half a billion dollars a year in terms of what we're trying to manage, doing our best to manage. But then there's the part where we represent the county outside the county for, at the state level, at the federal level, within other institutions, so we're doing our best to sort of bring it back. So we all pay taxes and those, and other things, and those go to states and federal governments, and then we have to like angle ourselves to get those things back into the communities and, and then manage them and spend them in ways that are most beneficial to our, to our constituents, to our, to everybody here. And then there's the customer service end of what we do. The phone calls we get for whatever it is, potholes, or this, that, and the other, just helping people navigate local governance as best we can and help represent groups as they move their issues through the process. And that's really, it's a fun job, I'm going to put it out there, because for me, anyway, and I think I speak for the others, it's just really diverse. They're just dealing with so many different issues and so many different people constantly. It can be overwhelming, it can be frustrating, but in the end, it's just extremely rewarding to really help people, and that's when you, when you know you've done your job the best.
Thank you. Supervisor Madrone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Good to see you all here. You know, they say that if you do something in life that you really love, you'll never work a day in your life, right? You've probably heard that before, and I suspect that most of you are on that kind of path where you're not, you don't have to do this advanced program, but you're doing it because you choose to, because you want to make something of yourselves, and we're waiting for you to fill all these slots up here and in our business community, as professionals, as community members. So I think it's fantastic that you're here today to learn more about this process, and I thank Jim and Andrew and all of the folks that are involved in helping make this program work. I represent the fifth district, which is about two-fifths of the county. It's everything north and east of the Mad River, except for the town of Blue Lake. So it's a very diverse district. Each of the communities has different issues, and some of the issues span all of the communities, like fire. You know, fire's become a really big issue, and that ties back into forest health, which was one of your questions on the list that you had. I'm working on the answers, and I'm going to type them up and send them to Andrew and Jim to, to be able to give to you for your class, so you'll have a little more details. But of course, staff are working up some great details for you on a number of the issues you've brought up, like homelessness, housing, and other things, so look forward to providing that. McKinneville is the biggest community in the fifth district. It's as big as a city. It's 17,000 people, but it's not a city. It's still unincorporated, which is a very interesting thing, and so we're doing a lot of data collection to help the community understand, can they incorporate? What would that look like? What would the steps be? The thing about incorporation is it gives folks local control. They have their own mayor, their own city council, things like that. So there's some interesting things in McKinneville that way. We're also working on a town center in McKinneville to create, to help it have a character more than just Main Street, chain store, anywhere USA, right? So that's a really exciting project that the community's working on. There's a new community forest being developed on the east side of McKinneville. Of course, McKinneville has the Hammond Trail and a lot of other trails, and as you know, we're now working on the Bay Trail, the Great Redwood Trail down through the Yell River Canyon, so those are exciting things, both within and outside my district. Trinidad, one of the big issues is water supply. With the ongoing drought, that's a really huge issue for a lot of communities. Also, short-term rentals and the impact on housing availability for the community. Oric is working on trying to get a sewer system so that they can have economic development. Fieldbrook, Willow Creek, fires are big issues, especially out in Willow Creek. We had the lightning complex this summer, we had the Nob Fire last summer. It seems like every year, we're getting more and more of these fires, so part of the solution there is to create more jobs, to do forest health work and do thinning, not clear-cutting, but thinning, to help the forest health and produce forest products as well. So a lot of interesting things all over the district, and of course, I have many tribes and rancherias in the fifth district. There's nine of them in the county, and eight of them have ancestral territories in the fifth district, so I work with the tribes a lot. And then you've got Orleans. The fifth district goes all the way up to Orleans and Somes Bar, up by the Salmon River in the far northeastern county, part of the county. So it's a big district, very diverse, and I'm very honored to help represent that district, and thank you all for coming here today and, and meeting with us.
Hey, thank you Supervisor Madrone. And running up on the timeframe here, I'm, my district's the fourth district, which is, I'm really fortunate, it's the smallest district. I can basically go around circles all day long and just keep going through the different areas of my district. It's really easy for me to do customer service because that's who the voters are, they're our customers. My district's basically City of Eureka, Samoa Peninsula area, and Myrtle Town, and there's a lot of exciting things happening on the peninsula, for sure. The City of Eureka actually is the governing body of most of my district, so I have to work really closely with them, and so having good relationships with other electeds and different types of governments is a, is really important in this job. One of the things I wanted to mention on the overall job is, even though we are representing specific districts, our job really, when we're sitting up here, is to make the best decisions for the entire county that we can. And while certainly we want to advocate for the ones we perceive as being our customers because they're in our, our district, we really have to keep a focus on what's better for the bigger, bigger, greater good of the community, and so it's, it's not always easy sometimes to put yourself in that position, but I think this board does it really well. I also think most of the board grew up here. I'm not sure about Supervisor Madrone. I don't, did you grow up here? You've been here a long time.
I'd say yeah.
Okay, yeah, so yeah, they're, they're still growing up, but, but I think that shows, you know, here, four of us are local, we grew up here, and we love our community, and I think that's what, you know, you don't get into this job because you, you know, expect to go be, do big, great things in the world. You do it because you want to make your community better, and you learn a lot, and having your kids here today, it's, it's really exciting to see so many of you, and I know it's a little nerve-wracking having to talk at these meetings to us and to the public, but you guys are all great, you know? I mean, it gives hope that there's, that the future is bright. So with that, I know we're betting up on the timeframe, I'm going to go to our CIO. Normally, we ask everyone else to talk, but I'm not sure if we want, do you want to introduce yourself and what you do? Try to, she keeps us in line, kind of, sort of, so does attorney.
Yes, that is a large function of our job. As county administrative officer, I'm Alicia Hayes, and county council here is with me. I'll let him speak in a moment, but we do, we work closely with the Board of Supervisors. We help them to implement their policies. My office develops the budget for the county in collaboration with our 20 different departments, which is the Board of Supervisors' largest legislative document and provides a spending framework for the coming year. My office also oversees the management budget team, information technology, communications, Americans with Disability Act, and purchasing and economic development. So we interact pretty prevalently within the community through all of those different departments, and also provide support to all of our departments. Thank you all for being here today. It's great to see you, and don't forget to look into public administration as a career goal. It's a great opportunity. Scott?
Good morning. My name is Scott Miles, and I am currently the interim county council. The Office of County Council provides legal advice to the Board of Supervisors and various other departments, agencies, commissions, and special districts.
That's so simple. He keeps an eye on us too, just to make sure we don't do something wrong. All right, so, and I'll just point out, Nikki is the person who keeps our meetings going here. She didn't really specifically want to say anything, but without her, we wouldn't be here, and hybrid has made it a really interesting, interesting time. So at this point, I, we have on this item, we need to go out to public comment, comment. If you're listening on the phone and you wish to make comment on this presentation, you should press star nine, and if anyone is here in the audience that wanted to comment on this item today, you can please just come up to the podium. Alrighty, it's a quiet group. So we'll go back to the board. Again, we're really sorry that this has to be so rushed, but we know you, you're going to actually have a pretty exciting afternoon, morning in here as well. I'll get back, I'll go right there, because we do have some other folks coming in to see you in here once we leave the chambers, is that correct?
Chair Bass, I just want to point out there's two people with their hands up.
Oh, is it online?
I'm not sure if you can see that, Nikki.
Okay, because I couldn't see anything on mine because my Zoom is on one. Okay, sorry. Two fours, we'll go back to the public comment. Two four zero three followed by one two eight two. So two four zero three, if you're here to want to comment on this item, this is your time. Press star six to unmute.
Hi there, good morning to the board. I had originally raised my hand just because I'm calling in on the audio today and just noticed that the audio was a little bit distorted, but I wanted to also comment on the group with AR. My friend actually just started Redwood Prep this year, and he's 11, and he's very excited to take part in the AR program. I went to College of the Redwoods, I had a great experience. I recently went back to school, so I'm doing distance learning with DR. So thank you for coming forward today and kind of sharing some of your concerns and experiences.
All right, thank you, and I think we are having some trouble with our, our audio. Okay.
Did you try the next caller, Madam Chair, to see?
Yes.
Excuse me, basically that caller was thanking all of you in the Academy of the Redwoods.
All right. Glad you, you're better ears than the rest of us. One two eight two, press star six to unmute if you want to speak on this item, and you'll have three minutes. One two eight two? Are they unmuted?
They're not unmuting.
Okay, perhaps they wanted to speak on a different item, would be my guess.
Maybe on non-agenda items.
All right. Then we'll go back to, yeah, then we'll go back to the board, and as we were saying, before I go to Supervisor Bushnell, there's more in store after we leave the room here. You're going to have some great presentations about a little bit more of the county, since we're not able to be with you this entire time. Supervisor Bushnell?
I just want to make a motion to accept the presentation.
Second.
Sorry, the public comment period...
Do I have a comment? I'm sorry.
No, no, this is, no, this is actually on the specific item.
Yeah, I have a comment on the item.
Okay, we closed the, sure, come on up.
Well, since we're teaching our young people about what this is, I wanted to let you all know that I'm part of the union, the SEI union.
And can you look at us when you speak? That's one of the things we make them do.
Yeah, so what a union does is they help the workers make sure that they have healthcare and they have adequate pay. So we can do a little math. A union worker makes $16.50 an hour, Mr. Madrone. How much do you make an hour?
We don't answer questions, so thank you.
Okay, so this is something you could Google, right? And so the union's job is to, you know, help make sure the working-class people have enough pay, and so, you know, pay... And so, you know, pay is important, obviously, for housing, you know? I can't afford to get to work right now. So this is, you know, a problem that we have in our community. I recognize Supervisor Bushnell worked with the school district, right? And so she's looking after the well-being of the children in our district. So unions are, are something you can join when your employees, certain jobs have unions, and they help people have their rights so they can afford to get to work, have a roof over the head, and get to eat. Thank you so much for coming.
All right, thank you. So I think that was actually meant for the other item, but we're going back to the board. We have a motion and we have a second. And while it seems silly that we have to approve that we're accepting your presentation, even though we know we just accepted your presentation, we still have to take official action.
Okay. Can you, is it coming up?
Did the, did the vote tab come up on everybody?
Is it coming up on yours?
It actually worked this time? Does everyone have their vote tab up?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, that's unusual.
Good job.
Okay. Like I said, technology has been really something to get used to here.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. So before we leave, yeah, we do have another item. We're, we're going into what we call closed session, and we have seven different closed session items. So this time, I will go to our County Council, or interim County Council, Scott Miles, to brief us on closed session items.
Thank you, Chair Bass. It is the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators. It is also the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 and E1 in order to discuss exposure to litigation in one potential case. It is also the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 and E3 in order to discuss exposure to litigation in one potential case regarding Humboldt County's alleged failure to comply with its duty to consider and protect the public trust uses of the Lower Eel River from adverse effects from groundwater extractions during late summer of low-water years. And finally, it is the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Rory Kalin versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV 2000902, Southern Humboldt Community Healthcare District versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV 2201351, and John C. Ogborne versus the Superior Court of the State of California et al., First District Court of Appeal Case Numbers A166183, A166184, and A166185.
All right, thank you. So now we'll go to the public comment on any of these closed session items. So if you're listening at home and you wish to comment on any of these, make sure to press star nine now. And please, anyone who's interested in speaking on our closed session items, stand by the side of the room so we can go through these, through the list quickly. Welcome, Vivian. You're, you're the only one standing so far. If anyone else is planning to speak, please do stand to the side so we can make sure we... And because, and one of them, yes, go ahead, please.
Greetings. My name is Vivian Denniston, and I am a IHSS provider for Humboldt County. With my daughter's permission, I'll tell you that she is my consumer. I've taken care of her as she's been an adult for over 20 years. We care for Humboldt County. We are the IHSS providers who take care of almost 2,500 people in Humboldt County who have a disability or are a senior. We're keeping them from being institutionalized, and as you know, they wouldn't even remain in Humboldt County. They would have to leave the county and their families. We work 24 hours a day, around the clock, so that our consumers can live their best lives, their longest lives, be healthy, and remain a part of the community. So as I do take care of my daughter, when she became an adult, she was no longer in school and was just with me. And I did have a job at that time with a nonprofit, working part-time, and they were generous enough to let me bring her to work with me. That unfortunately only worked for about six months. Then I had to quit to stay home with her because I could not find reliable help. And so fast forward over 20 years, and this is still my job. I'm still caring for her 24 hours a day. It's just her dad and I. We have no support staff, and she goes to no programs, so she's with us all day, every day. I would say this is not the job I chose. It chose me. I had never heard of IHSS before my child became an adult. Honestly, I'd rather have a job outside the home. It'd be easier. Sarah has multiple disabilities, and she's a challenge. So we do struggle with finding people to come into our home and support us and her. So having said that, clearly, this is gray hair. I need some help. But I, I need that person to be a valued, trained person. So please, help us get a living wage where people want to stay and do this work that, so when I'm gone, somebody will take care of my child, that she won't be institutionalized because of lack of care in the county. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Actually, we don't clap either, please. It's just so, thank you, perfect. I'm welcome. And I did want to just get a, give a time check to folks. One of the problems, one of the challenges we have with closed session that we have to go into is we do have some people from out of town who we will be speaking with, and including your item, potentially, we don't want to miss the opportunity to actually have those conversations. I don't know how else to explain that. I would just say, you can be brief, thank you, that was perfect. Thank you, welcome. I get to have all the fun. Yes.
My name is Von Day. My sister takes care of me. I am coming from a very abusive home where they were taking care of me and hitting me. So my sister swooped in and took me back. So I think that they need a little bit more money because my sister's struggling just to get to her other clients. And we need help getting that extra money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Von Day. And next, please? And if you like, we can have, there's another microphone that is more accessible there.
Okay.
Can you click that to make sure it's on? I think it's me that has to turn on, just hit the microphone part of it. Hold on. Try it again. Do you, is it, we're coming through at all?
I'm not sure. I, I've got to talk. Right here.
Hello, I'm Nathan Charles.
Okay, good, thanks, Nathan.
If it wasn't for SEIU and healthcare, I'd be, wouldn't be able to stay at my house at all. It's been very difficult for me because I lost my leg a year and a half ago. And without my client being able to work for me, she is, I, like I said, I'd be in a rest home or something because I can't cook, I'm going blind. And she's actually thinking about trying to go out and get another income just because it's so hard out there and, you know, paying the bills and everything, so. But like I said, without SEIU and the healthcare workers, we'd all be in deep trouble if people like me would have to stay at home and not have anybody there. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Nathan. All right. Next person can come up, please? Charles, this is, this is about the IHSS workers.
Okay.
Or close, I mean, it's closed session. This is, are you, this is not general public comment, so I just want to make sure.
Sorry, we got all mixed up, so.
Well, you have the right color, though, so. That's all right. I feel the same way today. Welcome, just, come on up. Yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be here or not. I am a SEIU member and an IHSS provider. My name is Sarah Surgeon, and I listened to your guys' comments today, and you touched on a few subjects that are really close to us workers. This morning, we spoke about the homeless issue, and the other one, you are here to help people. So if you guys are here to help people, my question to you is why are more and more of us in home healthcare becoming homeless? Why? Wouldn't that mean that you are part of the problem? We are not asking for much. We are asking for you to keep us out of poverty and homelessness. Don't you believe we deserve it? It costs the, the state and all governments that pay into this program, they will be paying a minimum of $5,000 for each recipient that we care for. $5,000, and the baby boomers are coming, and they're going to come in a big giant wave. Fast food workers are going to be making $22 an hour for the things that I do and the care that I provide. It's just not fair. So we are just trying to give them a better life in their home instead of care facilities. I want to give you some of my background. I provided care for strangers for six years, up to six at one time, so I could provide for my family. If I do not work the maximum hours, then I do not get to pay my bills. My overtime is actually how I pay my bills. That 26 hours of overtime is what kicks me into actually not being homeless. One day, I finally found my sister. After six years of searching for her, she was in a home. She was in a wheelchair. She was in, she didn't even know she could use her prosthetic leg. I had to help her from the wheelchair to a chair. Since then, you saw her stand here, and she's on her second leg. She walks. Last time she was here, she was in a wheelchair. Within six months of me providing care for my sister, she now walks. She's lost 20 pounds. Her diabetes is under control, and she has somebody that actually cares about her. She was abused. They wouldn't feed her, they hit her, they, there were so many things that happened in that home that was absolutely ridiculous that are things that are allowed to happen in these homes. So basically, what I'm saying is, this, I do a two-person job for a handicapped quadriplegic, and what I'm asking of you is better wages and benefits for people that sacrifice to help others. It takes a special person to provide care for those beautiful people.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Maggie Madden. I'm an educator, and I also provide care for my family and for my friends' family. And I, too, keep people out of home. And so it also, it saves us money. It keeps them out of hospitals, it keeps them out of care facilities. If I can take my aunt to an appointment and make sure her needs are getting met, connect to the resources she needs, then she doesn't, I don't have to worry about her going into a home. Let's play a day in the life of, right? What does a recession look like for someone like me? At this point, I cannot afford to get to work. I have to borrow, I had to borrow gas money to get to work, so then when I get paid, then I have to pay that person back, right? I pay all my bills, and then I'm back to square one, right? So poverty in your neighborhood, Mr. Bone might look like your neighbor putting their house up for sale and having to move to a smaller place. Poverty in my neighborhood looks like Mrs. Virginia Bass, looks like people in the streets. And, and these are our people, too. These, these are people that grew up here. This could have been my aunt if my cousin wasn't looking out for her, you know? And so I think that you really need to consider the fact that, like, I'm a college-educated person, but I could make more working in and out. And I, I find that concerning. And these are, you know, big corporations out of the area. And I'm sorry, but if I can make more in and out than I can caring for my aunt, and I need to pay my bills, because poverty to me looks like not being able to pay rent. And I've been homeless twice with my daughter, you know? And, and I don't want to go there again. And it's something in our head, you know? When, when something happens, you know, someone loses their job, or you, I don't know, the rate of gas just went up to $6.17 an hour, and my boss, you know, can't give me a raise because I can't just magically do that, right? But, oh, wait, you can. That's your job, to make sure that we are able to house our families, feed our families. And we do really important work in the community. And if you, if, and so I just, I really, I'm looking at you as an ally right now, all of you. And it's your job to look out for us. We pay our taxes. All that money for us is going back into the community. It's going to the co-op, to WinCo, to our landlords, right? And so you're actually giving to the community. You're solving homelessness, or at least alleviating some of it. Might actually have to build some houses to, maybe tiny houses. Anyways, thank you for coming and hearing me. I appreciate all of you, the work you do, but congratulations on your retirement, Supervisor Bass.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Suzette Miller. Thank you for letting me come up here. I just want to say that I am grateful to have my job. It's a really tough job out there. I was homeless, and when the opportunity came up for me to have this job, now I have a home, I can, I have a home. I, it's really tough out there. I mean, when clients get sick because this is a job, and they go to the hospital, then I'm out of job right, right at that time. You know, and when I go to work, and at the end of the year, I want to collect my taxes. I'm on a tax rack, you know, because I didn't work hard for nothing, you know? And, and this is what, what we deal with. My husband and I, we're, we're still on the county welfare. We have food stamps, you know, and given good benefits to our job, you know, I think that we can excel more, and the cash food stamps will be for people that can use it and we don't need it anymore, you know? And I just, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I hope you guys are good.
Welcome.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Marcus McCray. I'm the Regional Director for SEIU Local 2015. And of course, we represent the IHSS and nursing home workers in this county. And, you know, we're, we're actually here in large part to thank you because we had a bargaining session with you since the last time that we were here, and we really understood from that session that you want to do something to help workers in this county. So thank you for that. Something that you're hearing providers say this morning is that there's still a lot more that we need to do. And so we, we hope that we're going to be able to continue to work, do that work with you at the bargaining table. The situation that our members are in is that they're trying to figure out how to take care of their consumers' needs, get them to doctor's visits, to hospital visits, other visits, with gas being $7 a gallon. They're trying to figure out how to take care of someone else and also take care of their own household. And they're doing all of that while making 50 cents over minimum wage right now. That's nearly impossible. So we, we have some work to do together to really address poverty, to really address the poverty that IHSS workers are in. IHSS is a truly unique program in our county. The state and federal government pay 84 cents on the dollar, and there's no other program in this county that's like that. Giving providers a $1 increase would cost the county around $400,000, but it would bring in over $2 million from the federal government. It would bring in over a million from the state government. That's bringing in millions of dollars that don't exist in our county budget right now. It would be investing in one of the largest low-wage workforces that we have in this county and making sure that seniors and people with disabilities have someone to take care of them. So this is a win-win situation. It's really work that we need to do together. We look forward to doing it with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Welcome, thank you. Hi, my name's Danisha Lawson. I wanted to talk as a provider and as a mother of an autistic...
I wanted to talk as a provider and as a mother of an autistic special needs child, how hard it has been to not only continue to work and keep food on the table, but keep myself, I want to talk about mental health, not just for our clients and our children, but for us. To stay positive in this workforce is hard. As a parent, to be able to be there for your children's basketball games. I like being an IHSS provider because of the simple fact I can choose my hours by my clients and their needs so I can work around my child that special needs, I have to leave the home for. I currently have three clients. I work max hours. I'm a single mother of a special needs boy who is now 10 years old and ADHD, epileptic and autistic. Very full of energy and high on the spectrum. Takes a lot out of me after a full workday. Three clients per day. I'm up by 5:00 in the morning. I pull a 5:00 to 7:00 before I even get my kids to school by 8:15. Now, my PowerPoints that I wanted to discuss with you are the fact that last month, I lost a father-in-law. And he ended up being an amputee and wasn't able, due to the lack of people that are running to the front lines to provide services for our offices. He wasn't even able to be started on IHSS. So, it's not just the workers that are shorthanded and the gas and the issues there and our hours. But getting people on the program has also been hard. People aren't running to sign up to help our program at what they're getting paid. I also wanted to talk about the gas. It's not just the issue with gas and the rates that have gone up. I've gone through three cars in two years. And I mean, when you're on a limited income, what type of car can you get? I think that we should all be able to maybe afford a hybrid-type vehicle if we're going to work a county-state job like this, some type of elective or some type of way that we can work out to be able to help and provide for other people. All the wear and tear on our vehicles, along with the price of gas, is really hard. I also wanted to talk about the fact that me working max hours and doing the best that I can as a single mom takes me out of the bracket for any type of resources. I don't get HUD. I don't get Section 8. I don't get food stamps. I make approximately under $100 too much for that. And I'd like for you guys to consider it because, again, you guys are the ones that helped us and are here to help us. And my father's memory, I got up to speak. I usually don't. But I wanted you guys to know that it is hard out there for us and it's hard out there for elderly people to get these services to get started. They're in their homes and they're suffering. Thank you.
Thank you. Antoinette?
Hello, my name is Antoinette Skiles. I'm here today because one thing that Vivian brought up was, you know, her child, it chose her. Her opportunities and her reasons why she does what she does because it chose her. And there's a lot of people out there that would think, well, you know, it's your child. You should take care of it. Well, how is she supposed to pay rent? How is she supposed to do anything with no income if she has to stay home? I take care of, let's see, a 96-year-old, a soon-to-be 80-year-old, a 30-year-old, and a 67-year-old and 11-year-old. And I challenge any one of you guys to take that little 11-year-old that walked out this morning for the day or half a day, and you tell me how easy it is. Mother needs a break. Caregivers need protection. I mean, it is not easy, you know? Bruises from head to toe, hair all pulled out. But what can you do? Because we don't have the training to, you know, really, you know, and I'm not the parent. I'm just the outsider to give a break, you know? So, it would be nice to start with a good year. And yes, my car is breaking down right now, and I rushed from Rialde. And I'm losing water. And I had to get here on time, which was very stressful. I just paid $1,400, and my car's still not running right. So, it's a setback. And I know it's not your responsibility. And you probably have extra income, as we don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Beverly, and I live in Mendocino County. Here I go again. I'm just turned 79. I live alone. I've been divorced as long as I was married. And our gas is still cheaper. But I have, sorry, and quote, "American car", and PT Cruiser Turbo. And my gas is the most expensive. You're higher in gas up here than I am in Mendocino County. But I go to the casino. I don't go to Safeway, or I go to the Patriot Station. And it's all around $6 or $6.25 a gallon. I am fortunate that I am on Social Security. But now, I count on that because it's so little to pay the rent. And my rent goes up in our trailer park every year. It's $30 a month, starting in November, every year. So, I try to put money ahead. I was working for a private pay. I have a couple of IHSS clients. My private pay just went into a nursing home. So, that was 90% of my money. And I'm fortunate that the car is paid for, but I'm paying high rent. And it's like I always tell people that I live, I moved back out here from Vermont, which was fairly inexpensive, and I went broke. California loves to keep you broke. And I probably shouldn't say this, but I owe the IRS a lot of money. Now, I have to work out a deal with that. But it's hard. And I'm taking care of people. I got a 92-year-old I have. And I have a 76-year-old. And I'm a 79-year-old. I'm going to be in their shoes in a few years. Maybe, maybe not. And I think it's unfair for us to get such little pay. And it's terribly unfair that the fast food can make more money than I are. Whose lives do they have in their hands? The only time they have lives in their hands is food poisoning, and that happens very little. So, I think that you've got to reconsider us again. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Welcome, Katie.
I'm Katie Coventry, and I'm a home care worker. I currently take care of two clients. I made a promise to a good friend of mine that was a firefighter that was disabled. And his wife was also disabled. When he died, I promised him I would take care of her the rest of her life. And I will continue to do that. I'm also taking care of another gentleman in the community that's getting ready to turn 95. It's a disabled veteran. And in order for them to be able to stay in their homes, I need to be making a living wage. Currently, I take these people to appointments. We do not receive any money for gas. We use our own cars because they need to get there. They have no way to get there. They don't have the funds to pay us even for gas. Rent is going up. I just got a notice for rent. Rent's going up $50 starting next month. You know? I don't know if you've been to the grocery store? You know, there's an extra 50. I mean, it used to be 20 bucks a bag. Now, it's more like $75 or $100 a bag. I also have to work two other jobs to continue to pay my bills. I am working literally 18 hours a day. I should not have to work 18 hours a day. So, it's up to you to make the decision to make this right. We all don't want to work two and three jobs. You know, we shouldn't have to. I don't have days off. A day off doesn't happen. I don't have vacation. Doesn't happen. One day, I'm going to need care, or you're going to need care. And you want workers to be respected. You want workers to be able to make a living wage. And you want workers that want to go into this profession. We do this because we love taking care of people and want to take care of them. But we need to be able to pay our bills. So, it's up to you to do the right thing and make the decision. Otherwise, one day, you may need care, and you're not going to have anybody willing to do that care. And everyone here is either going to be giving care, getting care, or you know somebody that needs care or is getting care. So, this county can do this. We can work together and get this done. And if not, we will be back here. We will continue to be here. We have the purple, as you know, we have purple power. And we will continue till it's done.
Thanks, Katie. And welcome.
Hello, my name is Dora Garcia.
Her name is Dora Garcia, and I'm going to translate for her.
Yo estoy aquí porque trabajo para personas, me trabajo para IHSS.
I am here because I work for IHSS.
Y tengo tres clients.
I have three clients that I care for.
Y la verdad, me gusta mucho trabajar para estas personas.
I enjoy very much working for them.
Porque están muy necesitadas, están solitos en sus casas.
These folks are very needy, and they're very lonely in their homes.
Y están muy pobres.
And they're very poor.
Y me siento muy mal dejarlos solitos allí y irme a trabajar en una compañía.
And I feel awful just abandoning them to go work elsewhere.
Ya traté.
I have tried.
De dejarlos ahí, de irme a una compañía con beneficios.
I have tried to leave them to go to a company with benefits.
Como por cuatro meses.
For about four months.
Y fui a visitarlos, y estaban solitos.
And when I went to go visit them, they were very lonely. I feel awful.
La señora perdió peso.
My client, my lady, lost a lot of weight.
Y no tenía quien la llevara a comprar comida.
She didn't have anybody to take her shopping, grocery shopping.
So, regresé ella y esto.
So, I came back. I made the decision to return, and I'm still there.
Están muy contentos, no quieren que los dejen solos.
They're all very happy. They don't want me to leave them.
Y es muy poquito lo que pagan, y no es... En veces, no me alcanza el dinero para el gas.
And it's very little that I earned. And sometimes, I don't even have enough for gas.
Pero tengo que llevarlos al doctor y donde ellos necesiten, y eso que no me importa.
But I have to take them to wherever they have to go, the store, the doctors. I don't care.
Porque ellos también no tienen dinero para darme para el gas, y no me importa a mí. Es okay.
They don't have any money to spare on gas either, but I don't care. I do this, I pay this out of pocket.
Pero yo pienso que si pueden pagar más, pero nomás pues tienen que saber las necesidades de las personas.
I believe that we can get better pay if you knew the necessities, the needs of the people.
Ya es todo. Gracias.
And that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
And I was already in line to talk. My name is Luisa Acosta. And, you know, I had no idea about the IHSS program. I came across the IHSS program when my dad had a major stroke and was bed bound. At that point in time, my life as a professional changed. The life of my sisters as professionals also changed. My father needed care 24/7, okay? And so, some of us made the decision to work part-time in order to care for my father. I am a 12, there's 12 kids, siblings in my family. I am the middle child. And as a middle child, I was the closest to my dad. And I felt that I was going to die with my dad, but I never left his side. I moved my dad into my home. Therefore, my sister helped him in the day, and I was there during the night. And it was really, really, really hard. And I never, ever put myself in anybody's shoes because I never saw it. I never saw the need. We thought we were super healthy. And then, my dad, when he went to the hospital, they gave him 24 hours to live. I thought I was going to die with my dad. And you know what? Because of our support, our love and our care, my dad, who was 97 years old, he lived seven months after the major stroke. Unable to eat, unable to move. But just watching us in our care made my dad realize that it was time for him to go. It was super hard. You know, some of our members have talked about mental health. We had nothing. We had nothing. I personally had to go to counseling. This is the first time I've ever spoken about it because it's not fair. You know, right here, I see the young kids. I have kids, too. My kids went through hell and back because they lost their grandpa. They lost their mother because I nearly went crazy with his loss. And my kids are now suffering, okay? My kids are going to school, just like these kids. And you guys never know when your life is going to change. You know, your grandparents are going to get sick, your parents, including you. Through my job, I have seen recent parents who have had kids who became disabled in the older ages. So, I'm here to tell you, one never knows when we're going to be there. We have to do the right thing. You, as our representatives, please, listen because you never know when you will be there. And we will never know when some of these kids will be here. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Genevieve.
I listened to all these comments about the purple color. Somehow, I choose the purple. I don't know what happened. But I feel for them. I'm a registered nurse for 45 years. I was amazed they can take care of three or people with this situation. But the problem is, we create a situation. I'm sorry. Talking about the vaccine and all that. I remember a long time ago, one out of 100 autistic people. Right now, we're all, one out of six. I know people say they don't, a lot of people to take care of people. And I just know one of my person called me. She's 81 years old, 79 years old. She's running around fine. But then, now she took a shot. Her blood pressure went up. She take three medicine now. We are disabled people with mandate, with the vaccine. We are carrying lots of problems. China have people take the shot and have, what's it called? Young diabetic.
Genevieve, can you get more on the IHSS part of this? Because I almost like very enough of it. All right, cool.
All right, okay, sorry.
It's about a negotiation.
I need to say slower. I get too excited sometimes.
So, this is on this item there?
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm on this item. Because I have a feel for her, like the lady with a child. I mean, I know, she had to deal with that every day, every minute. I feel for her. But how come it happened? I have people have, I mean, their little baby take a hepatitis B shot and become autoimmune disease. I have people say, they take the shot, the children's shot, and they have diabetic child, they have hyperactive child. We cannot create the problem. I really feel for them.
Actually, I see the attorney reaching, saying, I think it needs to be on the caregiver aspect in the IHSS.
I know, I'm a nurse. They ask me to work, but I don't take the shot. So, I won't go through the work. They need nurses. It's all compound, the same thing, is a whole thing. That's why I come out to say. I know, IHSS, I feel for my patients. I really admire you.
Look at us, please.
Can take care of people. I'm so, I mean, that's it. That's why I come out. I know, I'm speaking the right, I'm a nurse myself. But my point is, you have to see what's the basic problem. Society and love is love is love. When you have love, people survive.
County Council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Genevieve. All right. All you have to do is look at me. Welcome.
Hi there. My name's Sequoia. I didn't actually come here for this agenda item, but I felt inclined to just come up and speak. Just, obviously, they're here to talk about their wages and needing more money. And I've seen over the years, just through my own needs with family and friends and having to reach out to the IHSS system, and I've always wondered, like, why those people don't get more money? Because they do do work that is, it takes a special kind of person to be able to do that work and to kind of give up what they're doing to care for other people. And the wages that they get are not enough to pay for their living. And I do feel like they probably, I don't know what they get currently. I know it's probably not any better than what I've seen in the last few years. But I do feel like they've never gotten enough, and they probably should be supported in some way, shape or form. And then, just on the other side of that, not so much, it is a result of the amount of money that they get. It's really hard to even find workers. I've noticed that my family and friends always had a hard time even finding IHSS workers because people aren't doing the work because it doesn't pay them enough to be able to do it. So, whatever you're considering, I would hope that you're somehow supporting them to be able to create more, make it be a more desirable job for people to do and also be able to support the people that are choosing to do it. And just on a little side note, I didn't get to comment on the previous thing, And just on a little side note, I didn't get to comment on the previous thing, but the, the students that are here through the AR, like, this is a really good opportunity. I applaud you all for being here and being able to see what's going on in your community. Getting involved with this government and this process really helps you see things that you probably wouldn't normally be exposed to and be able to get involved in learning about the process. So, thank you for being here.
All right, thank you, Sequoia. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Mark Costa, I'm an IHS provider for my daughter Tanya that's on the autism spectrum. Obviously, we're here in support of a raise. Seems like we've got some simple math here. What we're asking for isn't, it doesn't even come close to a living wage. We've got people making $15.50 an hour on a, at 40 hours a week. And you've got, you know, you're making less than $2,500 a month. So, so what we're, what the union is asking for doesn't even really equate to a living wage. So, we've got the feds and the state willing to pay 84% of this increase, is my understanding. It seems like some real simple math that it's going to bring quite a bit of money into the community, that's going to get spent here. And, you know, I want to say as a fourth-generation Humboldt County resident, that it's a little embarrassing to have to see people come to the table to ask you guys for a raise that doesn't even come to a living wage. So, I want you guys to keep in mind when you're at the table that negotiating down on what they're asking for still doesn't equate to really getting people to where they need to be in life to, to support people. And keep people out of homes and other places are going to continue to cost the county and state extra dollars. So just please keep in mind when you're at the table that, you know, we look to you guys as representatives of making this a better community. And this is a decision that's going to help make this a better community by giving these people the raise that they need. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Mark. All right, we'll go to those on the phone now, I do see one hand is up, 0150. Just press star 6 to unmute if you'd like to speak on any of the closed session items. 0150, press star 6 to unmute.
Good morning, this is Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt, and with me is the son of the name of Josh Gray. And he may or may not be speaking in a minute, so afternoon will be if he's going to. So I just want to say that, that we've done the picketing thing, gotten together with the union, done that in the past. Over the last 20 years, taking care of people, doing in-home supportive services. I have a degree in mild to moderate special education, so I do have some training, I was planning to work with children. But when I got here, I realized some native people were really not going to take care of them. And I chose to do that instead for quite a while. So, recently, there was a fellow taken to UCFF. And he was having some cancer treatment and had had them for several months. Then, he went down there, he had to have, he had an infection, had to have back surgery as well. They did it, he came home, had to go back. Unfortunately, the care, and we could, didn't work out so well, so he had to go back to San Francisco. And then he went into the ICU unit and was not speaking. And they really told his son and his wife to come down and say goodbye, but they weren't sure if he was going to make it down, if they would even make it in time to see him. In our usual fashion from the Christian church, we pray with them. And he asked us that they go down, and if they couldn't get there, that they emailed pictures of them so that he would know that he's not alone and he was with his family. They did manage to go down, and as soon as he walked, as soon as they walked in, he started talking. So, we need that connection, we need that physical connection, that love, that compassion, that sensitivity. And for people that are very sick or just can't get around, if they're able to be in a home and feel like they're, you know, okay, that there's somebody, that somebody cares about, and that they're part of the community, they live a lot longer. And not only do they, are they enriched by people taking care of them, but in addition to that, they're enriching all of us because they're teaching us compassion and how sensitive life is. So I encourage you to step it up with whatever you can, and, and all that money's going to come right back to you. It's a lucky pay, so it's all going to come back to you. Because these people, and I didn't have any time to travel, no vacations. It was about staying close by to make sure that these people, sometimes in their last moments of life, have somebody with them that really cares and loves them. So, it's a hard job, but it's a picket.
All right, thank you, Dottie, sorry the, the noise didn't go off, but that was your three minutes, I apologize for, for that. Hopefully, we can get that working a little later. All right, so there's no one else with their hands up? No, we already closed this, we're, we're, we're back now, it's back with, we are going to go into closed session now. We got the rest of, end of public comment period. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, for those that couldn't hear that, it was difficult, she basically was supporting SEIU's request for better wages.
Yeah, we, and that's, our audio seems to be a little bit off on the call-in, so we'll have to work on that during the break. I have, I'm going to turn this over to our, our CAO to see about when we come back. I, I hear Supervisor Breschnell, well, asking questions, and I know there's general public comments still to come. What is your anticipation of how long we're going to be in closed session before you can resume?
We have a couple items that are contingent upon the participation of outside councils. So we are going to try to secure them and, and manage those items. And then I think we can come back in and return to closed session at the end of the day. So I would say 11, we will hope to be back.
Okay. We'll see how that goes. All right, so we're going to attempt to be back at 11. And the meeting will continue from there. All right. What a day. Thanks for waiting. So we are going to go to comments on items not on the agenda. And, and we'll go to those who are in public first. If you're listening on the phone, please be sure to turn your video, or your video volume off. Can't say that right, turn your volume off if you're watching us. When you call in, because there's a timed lane, you could lose your opportunity. If you want to speak, press star 9. We will go to those in the public. I'll go on the signing list, but some of these people may have actually been here this morning. Is Yolan here? Oh, welcome, come on, come on up. And it's a three-minute, it's a three-minute limit, so.
Sure, sure. Hi, thank you for hearing me out, my name's Yolan Benyaz. I am a lifelong Southern Humboldt resident. I own a business in downtown Garberville. And I'm here today to kind of sound the alarm on the economic situation that we're facing as Southern Humboldt residents and also as Southern Humboldt businesses. I personally have seen a 40% decrease in sales, excuse me, year-to-date. This last month, September, I saw 60% decrease in sales. I cannot operate at these losses. I've already had to lay off an employee of seven years. And I'd like to note that she's been able to, unable to find work in our community. Due to, across the board, every single business is not really hiring because nobody is thriving. Doesn't matter what industry you're in in Southern Humboldt. Businesses are laying off people. We're hearing, you know, every single day, I'm hearing anecdotes from other business owners saying that they're pretty much hanging on by a thread, funding their business, but with their own pocketbook. And it's, it's looking quite bleak for our future down there. I would love to stay in this community, I, it's where I grew up, where I went to school. I want to see it thriving, I want to see our community members being able to support our businesses. I'm not seeing any economic opportunities now that the cannabis industry is collapsing. I, you know, just read the article today about the PG&E issue, about the power issue, and how that's going to severely affect any development in our community, along with the issues that we have in the water districts with antiquated infrastructure. I'm really concerned at what the board can do, what you will do to support Southern Humboldt in the economics there and the people, because at this point, a lot of people are going to become destitute at this point. People are living on their savings. And I personally don't know if I'll be in business by the beginning of the year. And at that point, I don't know what I'll be able to do. But the storefronts in town will be empty and the streets will be barren. And it's the gateway to Humboldt County, so it's imperative that it turns into something that we can all be proud of and have a viable economy. So, I just wanted to sound the alarm to all of you so you can hear it from, from us. And that's, that's all I got to say for now.
Thank you, and thank you for being so patient today. I do not see Charles in the audience, or Genevieve. So we'll go to Charlotte. And anyone else who wants to make public comment on non-agenda items can just stand at the side of the room and we'll just come up one after another. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Silverstein, I own the Garden of Beeden in Garberville. I just celebrated 38 years. I am a main employer, I have seven employees. And I feel really lucky to have been, you know, to be in the place that I am. I do a lot of mail orders, so that is keeping us alive. I am lucky to be down, to, for my store to be down 20%. I've moved recently, and so I'm on street level, and people say, "How do you like your new spot?" Well, I love your, the spot, but then I get to see what goes on in Garberville, which is a lot of vagrants and a lot of poor people. I feel like for years, since the legalization, the Board of Supervisors made the price of permits so expensive, it put a lot of people into, into bankruptcy. So now everybody's either leaving or they're broke. So then I say, "Okay, well, maybe we could, you know, talk a, a company into coming down and doing, you know, a small, a small factory or something." "Oh, but, but PG&E just came out and said that there's no extra power. They can't even barely supply what we already have at super overprices." But, but the cops, when I call them about vagrants hanging out on the street or selling drugs, "Oh, there's nothing we can do about it." So how are we going to, you know, cure these problems? You know, you guys are all happy with what's happening up north in Arcadia, you got Cal Poly. But here, you know, Southern Humboldt, we're the, we're the, the place where people come to first. And it's going to look like a ghost town. How, how are you going to help us support this and fix it? I hear that growers are getting grants. Can you guys give the businesses grants? Can you help us survive there and help people have jobs and keep jobs? We're at a loss, we're like, you know, at bitter end. You know, I've been there, like I said, 38 years, and I've always hired people. I get people coming in, filling out applications every single day. There's no place for them to work. So, I don't, you know, I hope that you guys can come up with some kind of solution and help us drastically.
All right, thank you. Sequoia?
Did you guys already do the consent calendar, is that, is this when I speak on that, or is that?
No, that, that one got, but one, what item were you, were you wanting to speak to?
On the nuisance and abatement consent.
Okay, yeah, you can, that was actually pulled off the agenda today and will be coming back, but you can certainly, yes, that is not on the agenda officially now, so yes, this is a perfect time.
Okay, I wasn't sure, it was a little bit confusing.
Hey, today, I'm not sure either.
Right on. I just actually wanted to see about getting one of the items on the abatement consent. It was, I think it was item 11, and it was number 13 on item 11. There is a abatement that's been going through the process and getting an extreme amount of fees assessed to it. And I don't know if the county is aware of the situation with the property or not, it's, and the reason I'm bringing it up is because it's a property that's in my neighborhood, and I've been dealing with coordinating a road association for all of my neighbors. And I got in touch with the landowner's mom, who's back in Pennsylvania, finally contacted me, and the guy's dead. And so it's been going through this process, but yet he's not responding because he's not alive. And so I wanted to see about getting it removed and maybe having some conversations with the county about potential things that can go on with the property, or somehow we can get it into someone's hands that could maybe care for it and not be subject to the extensive fines and everything that's been assessed to it. Because it's going to take a special kind of person to begin with, it's really remote, not a lot of people will even deal with it. And it's, no one's going to touch it with, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of fines on it. So, I, I don't really know a solution right now, but I just wanted to say, like, stop the process for a minute and let's see what we can do about this property, please. That was the first thing. And then, I just, I guess, I want to just respond to what these gals are saying about the, the condition of the economy in Southern Humboldt and really just reiterate, yeah, like, that's a real thing that's happening and we need to do something about it. And it isn't just Southern Humboldt, but Southern Humboldt definitely needs some special attention. I'm out in Eastern Humboldt, same problem. A lot of the county is experiencing this, and I know y'all are doing some things. And I just want to encourage there to be some attention given to the destitute nature of, there's a lot of people struggling, mental health issue, and I know these are things you guys hear all the time. But it's a really sad state of affairs throughout the county, and I'm hoping we can all come to some solutions. But really, that one thing was what I wanted to bring up, thank you.
Excuse me, not, this is not normal, Supervisor Bond has a question for you.
Well, it is, we do it every week, but anyway.
No, we don't.
Take the issue, because I forwarded your email to John Ford.
Okay.
So I take it there and see if there's anything you can do. It's pretty tough when you don't have a power of attorney or anything, but just FYI.
Right, I, it was so last minute, I didn't even know if you guys would get the email, I just figured I'd show up anyways. I, I am in contact with the mom, she doesn't do email, though she has her own health issues, so I'm going there, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sequoia. Welcome.
Thank you, supervisors. My name is Kelly Flores, I'm with Margar Advisors. We provide compliance consulting for farmers here in Humboldt. We wanted to take a minute, we were supposed to talk about grants today, and unfortunately, that got bumped. But we wanted to raise another related issue, and I know Supervisor Madron, you're particularly passionate about incentives for environmental projects. So we felt it was important to raise this, this issue. We, first of all, I want to say that we appreciate the very hard work that the Planning Department has done and continues to do on developing and issuing grants. As the next remediation grant is scheduled to be open soon, we wanted to raise this issue because there has been absolutely no progress in executing the previous remediation and mitigation grant. That's the Friends of the Eel River Award that you all approved back in June. We are raising this issue because the first phase of one of those projects, Cobb Road in Dinsmore, was recently completed and actually inspected by Scott Bauer with Fish and Wildlife. And he had very high praise for that project and a lot of appreciation for the work that was done. However, the contractor has still not been paid in full for that effort due to the delay in receiving this grant funding. And this puts his willingness to work on future grant projects at risk. Similarly, Serendipity Associates and Walker Ridge Family Farms have both gotten their 401 certification from the Water Ward applications completed for construction, making them shovel-ready projects once that final approval is received and the grant funding is made available to move those projects forward. During the past few months, we've made multiple efforts to contact the department regarding this matter, including emails on June 14th, June 28th, July 20th, and September 14th. In July, we were actually told that the staffer responsible was on vacation. And when, when they returned August 1st, they would be able to quote, "Bust out a grant agreement that week." That didn't happen. We're concerned that the Planning Department may fall into a habit of achieving grant approvals but be delayed in executing them due to the next round of grants interfering with the completion of the process. We understand that we're all juggling a lot of balls in the air right now, and all involved are doing the best they can. This is not a criticism of any particular individual. But after several months, we have to call attention to this issue because we're now getting close to the winter period, and these projects may be required to wait until next year to get started. As a reminder, these grant applications were actually submitted in October of last year. And costs for these projects continue to go up and up and up the longer it takes to receive this funding to move them forward. We're asking that the Planning Department take the following actions. For Cobb Road, provide the grant agreement and issue funding. For Walker Ridge and Serendipity Associates, verify conditions have been met. Provide their grant agreements and issue funding. And for Noonan. And for Noonan Creek, provide any clarity on remaining conditions, then provide that grant agreement and issue funding. We ask that the board, that you all call on the director.
I'm sorry, it's a firm three minutes, but you can leave, if you'd like to leave that document.
Yeah, I mailed it to you. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. All right, I don't see any speakers from, would you, okay, I just refreshed this, and it's not, oh, well.
Madam Chair, they just raised their hand. Haven't had a chance to put it in there. So caller 5457.
5457? You're 5457? Press star six to unmute. 5457? Press star six to unmute, only press it once.
They just lowered their hand. So they, I don't, they must have changed their mind.
Okay, this is, if 5457 is listening and you want to speak, press star nine to raise your hand again. All right, I need to figure out what's wrong with my chronicus. Yeah, all right, so press star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, it's not an easy process here, but my name's Lori Bergsong. I just wanted to address the board regarding the PG&E spraying. And I hope that, I know we have a county ordinance with Caltrans to prohibit spraying along road sides, but I would like to see the county come to some kind of ordinance that prohibits toxic sprays in any part of the county. Roundup is prohibitively toxic, and there's billions of dollars of losses already from that toxic chemical. We don't really need that in our community. So I'd just like to put forth that the county come to some kind of ordinance to ban toxic chemical sprays in any part of our county. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other hands up? I'm still seeing zero in my.
Madam Chair, there is no other hands up.
Okay, so then we'll go, we're back. So, I know Supervisor Madron, do you want to go straight to the CSAC one, or do you think we can fit the other little one in?
We've got time.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll be a little out of order here. We'll do this CSAC one before Mike, sorry. Okay, so this is regarding the CSAC appointments for the year, and I'll let Kathy do her report, and then I'll mention it.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The item before you today is for your board to consider appointing a member and an alternate to the California State Association of Counties Board of Directors. Every year, CSAC sends out a memo request for boards of supervisors around the state to appoint members prior to their annual conference and the first meeting of the next calendar year. And so therefore, the item before you today is for your board to make, consider making those appointments for the next calendar year, which would be 2023. Your current serving members through the end of the year are Supervisor Bass as the member and the alternate of Supervisor Bushnell. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to the board.
All right, thank, yes, Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I know that some counties do appoint a new person for the November meeting, and many counties actually leave them in place till January. Out of respect and appreciation for our outgoing chairperson, I would make a motion that we leave the membership as it is for now, with Chair Bass representing us through the end of the year. And we can revisit this in January with all the other appointments, and then Supervisor Bushnell staying as our alternate. So I would make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Yes, Supervisor Bushnell?
Kathy, do you, is there any problem doing that?
No, we have done that in the past when we have new board members coming on board. The current member who is appointed would serve through the remainder of the year, should your board choose to defer this to next year when we take up the other appointments. And I would notify CSAC to let them know that we have a new board member coming on. The board has chosen to push this to next year, which would be probably the first meeting in January.
Well, and I think Supervisor Madron, I just want to say, it's not uncommon practice for them to stay and change it in January, so, you know.
Along, if I could finish. Along those lines, it doesn't mean that the new incoming person would then automatically replace that position, because it's the fourth. No. Can I just ask the question, please? Thank you. Never mind, Kath.
I think, let's answer the question, I think, okay. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I'm just, who's, I, maybe I'd like to know, who's showing interest in serving it? I've heard that Supervisor Bushnell was interested, because she's been very active as the alternate. Is somebody else, or am I just being reminded things change at the beginning of the year as, again?
I would just like to say that I don't think it has, that conversation is not happening today on who's for next year, and who knows, this new person coming in may be interested. But if it comes to the board, you guys will be making the decision. What's that look on your face, Lori? You would be making, no, not saying that that person would be put in, I'd say this, this, no, excuse me, Supervisor Bone. I'm just trying to clarify, it's not that that person comes in and goes into the position, they'd be part of the vote. Okay. Well, it's not the way you're acting, so. All right, we'll go to the public comment. And there's no one here.
Madam Chair, I have no hands up either.
Okay, then we'll go back to the board. I guess we can vote, or we can just have a more conversation.
Okay, motion passes four to one.
I do have a question. What offices, I mean, what appointments do not come back generally in January? It seems like they're all on the table.
The California State Association is usually in November. RCRC is usually, happens at another time, other, another point during the year. The, well, it used to be, it's the Great Rabbit Trail, now it used to be North Coast Rail Authority is a two-year appointment that happens. Those are usually the only ones that aren't on an annual basis that come back in with the list that we bring you. Usually it's at the end of the year if it's not an election year. Or it would be the first or second meeting in January if it is an election year, we have a new member coming on board.
Okay, thank you. So next, are we going to the supervisor item that's coming to us from Supervisor Wilson? I'll turn this over to you.
Something that's funny, I guess. I appreciate this today. I'm bringing this resolution forward, and basically it's just for support by the county, at least as board supervisors, in supporting Proposition 1, which is safe access to reproductive health care enumerated in the state constitution. I'm doing this because what we found out in, at the national level, is that unless it's enumerated in the constitution, the privacy clauses in our state constitution don't protect these rights. And so there is a movement to do that at constitutional level, at state levels, so that we know that they can't change. What occurred, basically, with Roe versus Wade, you know, some 50 years ago, was that the interpretation of the constitution was that abortion and reproductive rights was protected under the privacy clauses and amendment, or interpretation of the constitution. And with the new Supreme Court and their interpretation, which is a more, what they call an originalist perspective, that was reinterpreted. And so, and actually speaks to the resolution that we had a discussion about a few weeks ago, which is talking about, you know, the originalist intentions of the framers of the constitution, that just didn't have the same context as we do today. So this basically just helps us enumerate these protections that we have currently, or that we believe we have, under interpretation of our constitution. This would basically amend the constitution of the state of California to explicitly create those rights. I believe those rights would probably have been explicitly created or enumerated had the makeup of the framers of the constitution of California been not all men at the time that that was done. So I am putting this forward to support this, and that's my introduction into that. Happy to answer questions or entertain discussion. Thanks.
Anyone have any questions? Supervisor Madron?
I would make a motion to adopt the resolution supporting access to reproductive health services and California Proposition 1, the right to reproductive freedom amendment to the California constitution.
And I will second that.
All right. Is there anyone who's in the public with us here that wants to comment on this item? Nikki, do we have anyone on with a hand up?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, we'll go back to the board. And unless there's any other conversation, when the vote tab comes up. All right, five votes passes.
Thank you, board supervisors for the support.
All right, we'll go on to CAO's office on the next item. Human Resources, I should say. And it's regarding a change with CalPERS, so we have the experts here. Is there something supposed to be, is this one you're reading into the record? Okay, sorry. Would you introduce the resolution, please, interim county counsel?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Currently before the board is an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Humboldt authorizing an amendment to the contract between the Board of Supervisors of the County of Humboldt and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System.
Thank you. Yes?
Hello, board members. This item might seem a little familiar. It actually came to your board on consent a little while ago, but it was determined we need to bring it back as a departmental item. And further, we'd actually, before I hand it off to Catherine Lorenzo to do a little presentation, there is an additional change to Recommendation 2 that we would want you to consider as part of your approval, if you choose to do so. That would be amending the second recommendation to say, to introduce the attached ordinance by title, waive the first reading, and set the attached ordinance for adoption on October 18th, 2022, or at least one week away from the date of the Board of Supervisors meeting at which the ordinance is first introduced. And so what we would recommend is that you approve staff recommendations as modified with that language. With that, I'm going to pass it off to Catherine Lorenzo. She is the Program Manager over Human Resources Information Systems and CalPERS Compliance to talk to you about what is actually happening in this item.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay? I have a brief presentation to share with you to describe some of the details around this proposed amendment to the CalPERS contract. And I think if I just hit the start button, here we go. So the CalPERS contract amendment that is presented to you today is specifically about the HDSO share of cost. What is the share of cost? Under Government Code Section 20516, public employers can share a portion of the employer's normal cost with employees. So this often happens during a labor negotiation, and our next slide will define that a little bit further. In 2016, county employees agreed to share a portion of the employer cost as follows. So the table that's presented to you provides categories. In the first column, the employee's normal contribution for each category, the cost share that was agreed upon in 2016, and lastly, the total employee's cost. I'll give you a moment to look at that. Today, we're discussing the HDSO Safety Pepper Group specifically, because as you can see from the table, there is a modified share of cost that was agreed upon even in 2016, where the total employee cost did not exceed 12%. All right, and I will, it looks like everybody's had a chance to look at that table, so I'll move on to the next slide. Just a brief discussion on county MOUs versus Public Employee Pension Reform Act of 2013, otherwise known as PEPRA. While the county may have agreed to limit the HDSO PEPRA members' total contribution to 12%, it can only do so unless otherwise required by law. Every year, CalPERS provides employers, public agencies in general, with an updated employee share for PEPRA members specifically. And in our case, in fiscal year 2021, CalPERS determined the employee rate for safety members to be 12.5%. Obviously, this exceeded the rate that we had agreed upon in 2016 as the total employee rate for that group. This slide reflects the chart as the total employee cost should be now. So basically, the same chart, you're looking at a little bit of a difference because CalPERS added a fire safety group. But otherwise, we're looking at the second line that reflects the HDSO Safety Pepper Group. And you can see that the employee normal contribution as of fiscal year 2021 increased to 12.5%, meaning that the cost share should now be zero, and the total employee cost 12.5%. All right, moving on. Our, the reason that we present this item to you today is because our current CalPERS contract reflects a quarter percent share of cost for the HDSO PEPRA members. This share of cost was specifically based on the employee's normal cost in fiscal years 18, 19, and 20, which was 11.75%. So when combined with that quarter percent share of cost, we had a total cost of 12% as agreed upon. As far as CalPERS is concerned, that contract with the quarter percent share of cost brings the total employee cost for that member group to 12.75%. However, based on our agreements and the MOU, we cannot exceed 12% unless otherwise required by law. So what this contract amendment does essentially is it officially removes that quarter percent share of cost for this employee group from the contract. I'll just add one additional point for your board. The county thus far has been collecting and providing the employer's share to CalPERS in the manner that's in compliance with the HDSO MOU. So the additional share of cost that is actually the employer's cost has been reported to CalPERS as such. So this is really just formalizing that change and shifting that quarter percent from the employee's to the employer cost. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Nice, nice presentation. No questions? All right, so we'll go out to public comment. I'm sorry, I did not see that. Okay, thank you. Supervisor, thank you, Supervisor Bushnell, to show me Supervisor Bushnell. Madron, I need to go home.
That's okay.
One of those days, we're leaving with you.
I would move staff recommendation with the modification that was presented by our HR director, and thank you for your presentation.
I'll second.
Now we'll do the part. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this item? Don't see any. I'm still showing zero speakers?
There are no speakers with their hands up.
All right, we'll go back to the board. I don't see any of the, any other motions or moving arms. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All right, five votes. So, the next one?
Thank you.
We'll move on to- We'll move on to the bid authorization. I believe three was polled correctly, taken off something. All right, so we're going to move on to the bid, bid award authorization for the Garberville Veterans Hall demolition project. And welcome, Sean. We'll have you give us the update on that.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Meehan for Public Works Facilities. So the first part of this item is just requesting your board's approval on, uh, the authorization to award the demolition contract to Unlimited Environmental Inc. for the total amount of Uh, five bids were received in the project, and, uh, Limited Environmental was the lowest responsible bidder, and it's pretty good savings versus our engineers' cost estimate, so we're pretty happy about that. Uh, most bids are not coming in under budget these days, so that's good. The second part of my item is really the reason that I'm here before you. Normally, a bid award is just a consent item, but wanted to update your board on the conceptual design process for the Garberville Veterans Hall. I did provide Nikki the, uh, plan, and there it is. Didn't really have a formal presentation that I wanted to go through, but staff and myself have been working with the veterans now for about three or four months. This is the latest in about maybe 15 or 20 iterations that we've worked through with the vets. And this is still really conceptual, but they approved this formally on September 12th of last month, and this will serve as the basis for our continued design and engineering process. So we'll take this and use this as the basis for an RFP that has been drafted and is in development, and, uh, that'll be, um, kind of how we, we start the rest of the process. And this is really conceptual, it's going to change, I'm sure, throughout the process. It just answers some really basic questions about how the different programmatic elements work together, spatially, uh, some of the vets' goals and priorities that they want to accomplish with the project, and just citing the building on the, on the property and, and kind of working out relationship with context. So it's very basic, uh, but this is our platform for moving forward, and I wanted to just bring it to your board and answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, Sean. Supervisor Bushnell, I'll go to you first, do you have anything you wanted to say, add, question, anything?
Um, thank you. Thanks for, um, being dedicated to going down and meeting with the veterans. I've been at several of those meetings and they so much appreciate it, so does the Southern Humboldt community. I wanted to make sure that the bid for teardown included, uh, removal of their items, or no?
So their items are pretty limited, so we're going to move that stuff and store it. That's going to be a separate component, so we'll handle that directly.
As, as long as it's getting dealt with, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be stored locally, and then the moving component will either be a vendor, we could possibly do it with county staff. It really is a pretty limited amount of stuff to move.
Yeah, well, thank you, and thank you, I know that, uh, the first time you're, you came down, there were seven or eight designs and lots of conversations and, and, um, I do want to say, you know, the community has, it kind of gets confused a little bit, so just for the record, that, you know, the, you know, there was been items about budgeting and whether this is going to happen, but when I talked to you, and yes, it's happening, and yes, there's funding already, or we're going to get that funding, when I talked to you a couple of months ago, timeframe, that's, everybody's looking for a timeframe, so could you fill us in on that?
Sure, so, uh, plan with that, RFP for Architecture and Engineering Services, I'd like to accomplish that by the end of the year, and then so hopefully we can go into design, um, early part of the year, winter and spring, probably a four to five month period of design for the new facility, so then we'd be ready to bid it next construction season, you know, early summer 2023. It's probably about a six-month build, so best case scenario, could, could finish it next year.
That's great, I know a veteran that's looking to have his 100th birthday party there, so he's been waiting.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Madron, and then Wilson.
Well, I want to commend Sean and staff and Supervisor Bushnell and the veterans for all working so well together on something that has had so many delays over the years, but clearly the trains leaving the station, everybody's on board, looks like the destination is what everybody agrees with, so commendations to you, Supervisor Bushnell and the veterans for all working so well together to do something that has been so needed, and it's going to be wonderful, I look forward to coming to the first big party.
Thank you Supervisor Madron, the community, you know, this has been a long time coming, and I, um, want to thank my board too for, um, being so supportive, and our community, the Southern Humboldt community is looking forward to having a venue down there. I know the veterans are looking forward to having a place, um, to call their own and to not be moved around any longer. I'm so excited that it's finally coming, um, to fruition, and with that, I'll make a motion for staff's recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second, the motion.
All right. So, there's no one in the audience to speak, sorry, Sean, I don't know, wait, there's one person, but, you know, he's not interested in speaking to this. So we'll go out to those on the phone, do we have any hands up?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
All right. Certainly, we're back to the board, Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, I, uh, Sean, just really want to say thank you, you went well above and beyond communicating with the veterans and really accommodating them, I know I said that earlier, but I really can't express how much, um, you know, they, they're, they have a little bit of anxiety around this, and I just really want to stress how great you've been with them, and I so appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. There's the vote tab. Is showing everything else?
Okay.
Call vote. Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass? Yes. And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. So, next, this one is generally pretty easy. It's a resolution for the temporary employment of retired annuitent, um, as the administrative analyst. Yes?
Yes, Chair Bass, I can kick this one off. Uh, as it is just procedural per CalPERS requirements, this has to be a departmental item. This is in regards to Melva Perez, who we all recognized last week as retiring after 47 years of experience. Uh, obviously, with 47 years of, of institutional knowledge, that is a huge loss for the Sheriff's Department, and so this will allow for her, uh, to have an opportunity to help onboard and pass that knowledge off to, to her coworkers.
I'll make a motion for staff recommendation.
Second.
You have a motion that's seconded? No one's here to comment in person? No one on the phone? All right, we'll go back to the board. And the vote tab came up. Okay, five oh.
All right.
So, we're just, we're back to closed session, is this accurate? And, I s, yeah, we need a lunch, I saw Scott's lips moving, but I'm not sure what he was saying, you know? Okay. I'm how, um, half hour lunch, is that, oh, you're leaving, so we're not going to ask you. Okay, we'll wait for you. As long as you're here within 30 minutes. I think we can, there's three of us, so I'd like to ask, um, Interim County Council Miles to report out of closed session.
Thank you, Chair Bass. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items L2 through L5. With regard to item L6, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with Colin Toone, Highsmith, and Watley PC for the defense of the case of Southern Humboldt Community Healthcare District versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201351. With regard to item L7, the board voted 4-0 with Supervisor Madron absent to authorize the Office of County Counsel to represent the county in the cases of John C. Ogborne versus the Superior Court of the State of California et al., First District Court of Appeal, case numbers A166183, A166184, and A166185.
All right, thank you, so with that, we're returned.